Okay, now we have a from A to J consent calendar. And I see that there's a contingency here from trying to find it. Renaming, where is it?
It's H.
Hmm?
H.
Robin Whipple Way.
You're the Robin Whipple.
H.
There's a group here that have fought very hard to restore the name of Robin Whipple. Thank you very much. The Parking and Safety Committee did a really good job to restore the name. It was one letter, there was something that was missing. And thank you very much, ladies, for doing that. Because we want to keep the history of Belmont intact. So is there a motion, unless somebody wants to take something out, is there a motion to approve from A to J?
I'll move A to J.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Everyone in favor?
Five and O.
It's been changed. Okay. All right, okay. Hearings, none. Old business, none. New business, none. Eight. Commission, okay, so you are going to talk about a Designating Representative and Alternate to Subregional Housing Needs Allocation Policy Advisory Committee. What does all that mean, Carl?
Well, first of all, I'm floored that it's not even eight o'clock and I'm actually approaching you tonight, so this is exciting.
Isn't that nice?
Yes, good evening, Mayor Fireback and members of council. The various acronyms that were thrown out in this report, RHNA stands for Regional Housing Needs Assessment. And what happens with this process is it allows all 21 jurisdictions within the San Mateo County area to partner together to work on housing-related issues. In particular, the housing needs assessment that is generated via the MTC and the Association of Bay Area Governments. The City of Belmont participated in this process as part of our last housing element of 2007 to 2014. And we use that opportunity to leverage some of the housing requirements that would otherwise have been required for the City of Belmont. We use that opportunity to describe the need, but also allow more appropriate levels to be constructed in other areas that have some better opportunities. We are part of the process again, this time, for the next phase of the housing element. And that covers, I believe, the plan years 2014 to 2020 or '22. And I serve as the Technical Advisory Committee Liaison for the City of Belmont. We also have staff from our city that attend these meetings. But we need to appoint a Policy Advisory Committee person, and that's a council member. So what I'm here tonight to do is to ask one of you, in terms of taking a motion, to be the Policy Advisory Committee person. You don't attend very many meetings. I believe it's either quarterly or just a few meetings. Obviously, staff will provide guidance for you. Staff will attend the meetings with you. And again, there needs to be buy-in from the various cities relative to the regional housing needs assessment and process as it unfolds between now and the next few years. Again, once the process has concluded, you know, Belmont gets its number in terms of housing need. And what it means is that when we get to the end of this process and we're preparing the next phase of our housing element, again, it doesn't mean that we build that number of units. We just need to demonstrate that we have land and the zoning capable to accommodate that number of units. Obviously, the market drives housing, projects drive housing, and we just need to clearly demonstrate that we have the opportunity and the land use areas to accommodate this number of housing. I believe, Mayor Fireback, you've served as the Policy Advisory Committee rep-
That's interesting.
...for the last go-around. It's a good and interesting experience to hear how your other colleagues in other cities are dealing with housing issues, to provide that kind of policy stamp. And I certainly think that it's a good experience, and you get to work with staff on it as well. So our goal tonight is to have a motion for you to appoint one of you to be on that Policy Advisory Committee.
Who would like to be on it?
I'll volunteer.
Both of you?
Yep.
Do you want to fight over it?
No, 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 no.
No, I mean, who wants to be on it? I don't, you know, is a-
I know, we deal with it on CCG a lot. I mean, we talk about it a lot.
That's right, you're a CCG person.
Since I'm on CCG, it kind of, you know, works well with that. And you're on, are you, are you still on the hardboard?
I have not been able to attend the hard meetings of-
It could get really somewhat emotional. Some cities don't want all this housing pushed down their throats, and they get, they just, you know, they like to trade it off to somewhere else.
I'll be happy to serve as the alternate.
Okay, whatever you guys want to do.
All right, well, so you've got your-
As long as I don't have to-
I think Councilmember Bronstein may have had a question.
It's not about, you know, the who would sit on that, but I just had one quick question, and that is, do they add to the number that we already have designated for us between the years 2007 and '14? Do they add to that, or does it clean slate?
They certainly consider what's been built during the time period, but the number that is given to each city is based on the new production or the new amount of areas to be described for appropriate housing. So, for example, our housing number for the period of 2007 to 2014 was 399 units. Since 2007, between whether it's single-family homes, secondary units, multifamily dwelling units that have been built since that time, I think we're down to about 370 units that we still, in terms of housing production, over the balance of the time period. Is there going to be an opportunity for some additional units to be built between now and that time to potentially cut into that number? Yes. But when you look at the 2014 to 2022, they are going to be assigning a new number, and you don't get, you know, credit for what's already been built. So they're going to give us a new number. And then we have to demonstrate that we've got the zoning to accommodate that additional number of units.
And also, when the meeting, you know, starts, it's good if Warren knows when it's, so he can also attend, just in case. It's better to have enough people there. It really is, as you know, it's important.
Are the meetings in Oakland?
No, they typically occur in San Carlos. I think they occur at the Samtrans Building. They're not early morning meetings. They are at, you know, typically mid-morning to late-morning meetings. And again, it's not a tremendous time commitment, but it's a very important commitment.
It's important, very important. Because you do trade housing, which is, and some cities like it, so, and we might be able to do something along the Old Camino if things-
Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay, so, thank you, Carl.
So we have a motion for-
Is there a motion? You would like to vote on that? Is there a motion to have Chris Wozniak as the first and you as an alternate?
Some of them.
Warren Lieberman, is there?
Some of them.
Second?
I'll second that.
Everyone in favor?
Excellent.
And you'll let everybody, you'll let everybody know.
For the official record, thank you so much.
So everybody can attend?
Yes.
Okay. Verbal reports from council members on intergovernmental and subcommittee assignments. Anyone has anything to say?
The, we have the SBSA meeting. It was scheduled for this Thursday, but the chair is not able to attend. So it's, we just got word today that it'll be rescheduled, so that we, Jeff Ira from Redwood City. So that meeting will get rescheduled. We have an upcoming meeting of the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Commission. That one was, is tentatively scheduled for October 19th, if all of the commissioners can make it.
I think it's now firm.
So if you responded, then we're set for October 19th.
Warren, can you sometimes just might maybe write a report, a little report, of what's going on with SBSA as far as, you know, what's happening with the formula for-
Yes, in fact-
Or if you want to just say it now?
I'll give you an update right now. We are, at this coming meeting, we were supposed to be scheduling time for a workshop where that issue would be discussed. That is, the, any changes in the allocation for capital improvement projects amongst the member entities. So at the next SBSA meeting, we will schedule a time for a workshop to be held where that issue will start getting discussed.
Will that be a public workshop?
I assume it would be, and I will check on that. But, yeah, it's not going to be a closed workshop, so definitely anyone who wants to attend will be able to.
Not eight o'clock in the morning, though?
That I can't promise.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you, Warren. Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, I just want to quickly say, we had the first meeting in Belmont for this quarter of Peninsula Cities Consortium on High-Speed Rail last Friday. And the next meeting will be first Friday in November. It'll be, we're trying to get somebody from the MTC and somebody from the Bay Council, because they both, both of those organizations said that they wanted to insert themselves in the process on the peninsula. So that would be, if we do get them, that'll be an interesting meeting, and encourage everybody to attend.
Thank you. Nothing from me. David? Okay, so now the next thing is the verbal report from our city manager.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Well, this is the first meeting following the badge-pinning ceremony that we had in this very room on October 1st. And I think you should be proud of your efforts in that particular regard, and that's starting our own fire department. And I think that event, the 25 firefighters were there, along with others from other agencies, and their families, the council, mayor, and others, and staff. I think that that was a fitting beginning, let's say, to the Belmont, new Belmont Fire Department. And I didn't want to go through this meeting without talking about that, since it's the first meeting since then. You did mention the Sun Edison Grand Opening yesterday. Mayor, I think you did a good job of, or great job, of welcoming them to Belmont, and I think talking about the real issues that are impacting Belmont. You did mention already the Bike Bridge opening on November 19th, that's a Saturday. Another thing we shouldn't go by without noticing, and that's Scott Rennie's first council meeting, our city attorney. So Scott's been here a couple of times during other meetings, but this is his first official meeting here. I will point out, he's the third city attorney I've worked with.
Third city attorney.
Third, third, third time's the charm, right?
Sixth and O'Neill Project, and is Afshin still here? Yeah. I was just going to point out that the utilities have all been relocated for that project in conjunction with Mid Peninsula Water and East Bay, or PG&E, not East Bay, PG&E. And I believe the paving is still on schedule, right? There's another project that you should be interested in, and that's the dredging project on Belmont Creek down near Old County Road. I believe that's complete or near completion in terms of dredging out a portion of that area that habitually floods during some storm events. So that, in conjunction with the county, the city in conjunction with the county, got some of that material mucked out of there near Old County Road. And it's still not the best design, but it's still, it's better now that some of that material's been removed. And I believe that's all of the updates I wanted to bring up at this time, so.
Thank you.
I have a question. Greg, when is the, we're going to be finished on, in that area? Sixth Avenue area?
I think it's at the end of this month, but Afshin's sitting right here, I believe.
I mean, we had a lot of people come up and say they're, you know, they feel like they're, some people like it, and some people think that it's, you know, they're locked in there, and the businesses-
Yeah, I think that they should feel that way. It's been a long time. It's been the schedule to be at this same pace, but it's still starting to feel like a long time for them.
And when I came here tonight, there were a part of, another part of Sixth Avenue, all the way up to City Hall, was blocked off. Is that significant in any way, or the place, the part that's paved? It was also blocked off tonight. I wonder, is there going to be more work done there, or is that to follow after everything's done on the main project? I guess Afshin.
Well, we'll have Afshin answer that.
That was just purely for traffic control purposes, because people were kind of cutting through there and going through the construction. So we kind of worked with PED in conjunction with the contractor to kind of set a buffer zone-
Okay.
-for people not be cutting through the construction area.
Right, okay, so by the end of the month, that means what?
It should be all opened up and-
By Halloween?
Hopefully, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Afshin.
Hope is not a strategy, but that's what we're planning on.
We're hoping.
Okay, so that's about it.
Thank you.
So we have a number nine. And it's about health insurance benefits for eligible retired city council members. And I think that's yours.
Yes.
Go for it.
Thank you. All right, so just to clarify exactly what I'm thinking about, I'm looking to see whether council is interested in passing a resolution that would apply to all future elected council members. So current council members would be exempt, in part because, you know, there are vested interests to take care of. But the direction I'm looking for from council is essentially, there was a resolution in 2007, I'm sorry, there was a resolution, a resolution in 1997 that provided for council members to receive health benefits commensurate with, I guess, unrepresented management. One of the consequences of that was that council members became eligible upon retirement, which means after, you know, a certain number of years of serving, I don't know if it's 10 or 12, but essentially, if you serve three terms, you would be eligible to receive lifetime health insurance benefits from the city. My thought and my point really is, what we're doing here is a part-time job. When we get elected, we know it's a part-time job, there's a salary consistent with it being a part-time job. I don't think it's appropriate for the city to have financial obligations, in some sense, I'll say, no matter how small. But I don't think it's appropriate for the city to have financial obligations in the matter of health insurance to council members after they've finished serving their terms. So what I would like to see is if there is interest in agendizing a discussion for passing a resolution, and I guess I would say, I started this discussion with Mark Zaffarano when he was the city attorney. And I was preparing to bring this to the council quite a while ago, but when Mark left for San Bruno, and we now had an interim city attorney, it didn't make sense to have her do the legwork, because we were paying her, and there was no time urgency on this. Now that Scott's joined us, I thought, great, you know, this is, you know, your first meeting, it was, it was an opportunity to bring this up. So I don't think it's a lot of time, I'm sure there's probably several days, I think it's well below the 40 hours, though, for priority items, to prepare a resolution that would essentially eliminate this benefit for future elected council members. And Scott, I don't know if you want to add anything. I know that we've had discussions, and he's had discussions with the FPPC, trying to make sure that we crafted this in such a way that there were essentially no conflicts of interest for the current council members.
When I saw the item, my first, you know, I started thinking through it, I was thinking about the possible conflicts that might arise, and I spent some time on that, on that issue. The narrowing of the issue as proposed by Councilmember Lieberman to, I think from the write-up, as articulated by Councilmember Lieberman, I do not believe creates a conflict of interest for any of the council members to talk about it in terms of what future elected council members would receive. If the issue is broadened to begin to include current council members, then I believe there is the potential for a conflict of interest, or a financial conflict of interest. If the discussion is contained to dealing with just future council members, and whether or not they would receive the retiree medical health benefit, I do not believe there would be a conflict.
Thank you.
Okay. Since this-
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Cora, could I ask you a question? Coradinos, our Human Resource Director. How much money has this cost the city since 1997, this benefit?
Since 1997, for retiree health? Zero.
Zero.
Correct.
Thank you.
The problem is, most people don't go for three terms.
That's right, I mean, it started, it's right, it started in 1997. So in some sense, you know, you can see that there are three council members who are very close, or I guess-
I'm the only one.
Councilmember Fireback is eligible. Councilmember Warden, I guess you would be eligible soon. And if I were to run and get elected for a third term, I would become eligible. So I guess my point is, you know, it certainly creates a very strong financial or incentive, right? For a council member who served two terms, it creates a strong incentive to run for a third term. I think it's actually the wrong type of incentive, so I think taking it off the table is a good thing. The resolution itself has actually cost the city quite a bit, just because it involved a lot of benefits. So this is just one element of those benefits that I would like to take off. I'm not trying to discuss the level of benefits that, I mean, through this, I'm not trying to discuss the level of benefits that council members receive while they are serving on the council. Certainly, the resolution that was passed in 1997 affected council compensation very significantly. And that actually has had quite a, quite a cost to the city. But at least for right now, I'm just wanting to address the issue about post-council, post-serving on the council, the health benefit aspect of that.
You know, the person that was the finance director at the time, Sandy Salerno, I was actually was trying to get a hold of her, she's on a cruise. Unfortunately, she couldn't give us the genesis of why this was done. Maybe I can still bother her on the cruise, I hate to do that, but, you know, she has a wonderful memory and very good brain, so there might have been a reason, I don't know. Do you have any kind of feeling about this item? Or, I mean, I don't, why don't you, why don't we go kind of down the line, David?
I have no problem with it. I think it, you know, Councilmember Warden made the point that there's not anybody currently on the books. But for me, I don't think that's, that's not really the issue. I think that this represents a financial issue for the future. And so, as you said, Councilmember Lieberman, there is the potential for incentive, and I don't think there's, I don't think it's necessary. I don't think this is a necessary benefit. If people haven't taken advantage of it, there are people that are on the cusp of it, there are people in the future that may benefit from this. I don't think that's the right reason, and I don't think it's the right benefit. We've had plenty of conversations about taxpayer money, and I don't think this is one of those that I think is a good reason to support. All right, excuse me, let me back up. That I don't think this is where taxpayer money should be going for eligible retired city council members.
Okay, who would else like to say something?
Madam Mayor, I just want to comment that, again, tonight's item is a, is an item nine item, which means it's just direction to go back and bring information, do some analysis and bring back, not looking for an action on this tonight, other than agendizing it for discussion in the future. So as far as taking a position on it, on the subject, for, you know, whether you think it ought to be retained benefit or eliminated benefit, you don't have to take a position tonight. The only issue is deciding whether to put it on an agenda after staff has spent some time to give you some factual background and some analysis, so that you can then make a, form an opinion and make a decision.
There may be some comments, though, from the council on this item, because it is an agendized item, so Dave and-
So I would, I would support putting it, moving forward.
Okay, Dave and Christine, how do you feel? You would like to put this item on the future agenda, or would you like to say?
I'll go ahead, and I'll say, I would, I think that this is an interesting item. I don't see any urgency in it. I don't, so, what, when I saw this, what I thought of actually was, when we, several months ago, when the Green Committee came forward to us, we said we couldn't work on any green initiatives, because we had, this is the same reasoning that Warren said, we had a contract city attorney, we didn't want to spend the money. I would like to push forward on those green initiatives that, that the subcommittee worked so hard to put together before we do anything like this. Even though it's only 10 hours, I mean, or, you know, eight hours, whatever, it's still time taken away from progress on these green initiatives. So with that, also, I think if we're, you know, nobody's taking this benefit now, so it's not a financial issue for the city now. I would be interested in hearing more about it, and how much it would cost the city over time. I don't have any position on whether or not council should take benefits after they're no longer on council. I think we also get, we're eligible for PERS, which would be after we're on, I mean, this whole, what I, I guess what I would think is, if we're going to look at this one piece, I think we should look at the whole benefit package for, for council and not waste time on this one piece, because this one piece doesn't cost us anything. However, all the other benefits cost us, and if we want to ratchet that up or down, I think, you know, we need to do that. So, you know, I, again, I would rather spend the time working on the green initiatives than on this.
Dave, do you have anything you want to say?
I guess my question is, what, what did we do with the green initiatives?
We said we would wait until we had a full-time city attorney. Scott's here now, and I don't, I don't think we should start loading up, loading him up with anything that isn't of, this is not urgent, in other words. I don't think, I don't think this is urgent. And I think we could, we could do this later. I'd like to get, move forward on those green initiatives before we do anything else. That's really my, my objection to it, not in the substance of what it is. So that's where-
Is this primarily your work product, Scott?
Could you clarify what you mean? Well, somebody has to do something as far as staff involvement. It says, and according to Warren, it says, "I believe this will take a minimal amount of upfront research from the city attorney to research and understand the council, this issue, and provide counsel with necessary information to discuss." Is that true? Is that your work? Actually, I think the legal work on this, if it's as narrow as articulated by Councilmember Lieberman, would be very simple. And I don't think it would be difficult at all. I think it essentially is changing a resolution.
Which is also-
I think where the staff time is, is going to be in looking at what this means, which isn't going to be my time. It's going to be the Human Resources Director time, the Finance Director's time, looking at what are the implications of making a change.
Well, okay. So that being said, taken completely out of the political context and the timing of this, I'm not on the surface against it. I do feel it is a political stunt. I don't think it is urgent. The city has not spent one penny in 14 years on this benefit. There's only been one person who could have qualified for this benefit. She's not taking, she's not taking it. I don't see any sense of urgency on this at all. I mean, I might not retire in 25 years, I don't know if I'm ever going to take it. And frankly, I think if somebody serves on the council for 12 years, I don't think they just disappear. They're usually involved, they usually stay involved in the community. And so I don't know how I feel about it. I don't think when somebody serves three terms and they get off, that you just say, well, they just never existed, we don't, you know, we wash our hands of them. I don't necessarily feel that way. I would like to look at all of the benefits at once. I don't want to just look at this one thing. I would like to look at all the benefits. And I would like to compare them all with other cities, and I would like to do what I think, what I believe the council will think is fair. I don't know what that is. I don't know if this is outrageous or not. You call it outrageous. I don't know if it's outrageous. I know it will not cost the city $20,000 a year per person that takes this benefit. I don't know what it will cost the city. My understanding, it's more like $5,000 or $6,000 a year.
I think, I think it might be closer to $7,000 a year under current things, and then it may actually drop a little bit.
Okay.
So I guess my point really is-
But you said $20,000.
Yeah, yeah, I, as I said, I probably overestimated that. Originally, I had it as $10,000 to $20,000, and then it was actually changed by staff. But my point really is that I think that this is just inappropriate, it's not so much the financial side, it's an inappropriate benefit, in my view. The folks that I've heard from actually have, who live in Belmont, that's where I've heard words like obscene and outlandish, that the words actually for describing that benefit are coming from folks from Belmont, more than, more than me. I actually think it's a very inappropriate benefit.
You know what, it may be, okay? Those are your words. It may be grossly inappropriate, I don't know. I don't know what other cities are-
And that's why I want to get it on the agenda to discuss.
Well, and you happened to pick four weeks before an election to do it.
Actually, I picked the first meeting that Scott is here for. I was preparing this with Mark, that's why I said, Mark I had discussions with. Mark had led me to believe that this was not a lot of work, that's how I knew it was going to be a new resolution. When it was set to go to the council, that's about the time he announced his, that he was moving to San Bruno. And so for me, it just, I had to put it off until we, I'm not running for election. I don't quite understand-
But three of us up here are.
Well, to me, it's odd that you would accuse me of a political stunt. I mean, you can do what you want, you can say what you want. I think this is a legitimate issue. I'm not concerned about the timing. I think it's an, it's absolutely something that council has an opportunity to provide leadership with. And, you know, we can choose to discuss it or not.
I agree with that, I definitely agree with that, Warren. I think we will have a lot of opportunity to provide leadership when we look at the entire benefit package that the council gets. I think there's going to be a lot of opportunity to provide a lot of leadership, and not just this red herring, which has not cost the city a dime, okay? It hasn't cost the city one cent. So you're making a big deal, and you're getting all this talk about how obscene it- So you're making a big deal, and you're getting all this talk about how obscene it is from all these people, and you're getting all these articles in the newspaper about something that isn't even budgeted for in the budget, that has not cost us a cent.
Actually, we do put money your way, I spoke to Thomas about this, it is, it is part of the budget, so again, this is all, you know, this is all, it's all good discussion.
It is all good discussion, and I'm sure there's going to be a lot more discussion. Frankly, I'm not going to give you the satisfaction of not voting for it, I'm perfectly happy to bring it back with the appropriate amount of information, but I still think it's a political stunt, and you're right, it is my opinion, and that's what I think, I'm not against it whatsoever, but I'm, I'm very, very suspicious of the timing, that's all I have to say.
What's left to me? I agree, I think all the nice things that the council gets, all of it out of, all the, all the perks, whatever you want to call them, that the council gets, salary, everything ought to be taken into account, and I think the new council, whoever they are, ought to probably take a look at it. I mean, that's something, I think, you know, we're going to have, we'll have an election in October, I'm, November, I'm sorry, November, and I think whoever is elected ought to take a look at it, and I think we ought to have a lot of facts about other things that council gets, retirement benefits, and things like that, where they go, ICMA.
Well, that's, actually, that's a great point, why don't we give up our retirement benefits? Because those are something that we get after we get off the council, when we retire, why should we be receiving retirement benefits?
All right, the reason I chose health benefits is because, and again, I'm, I'm happy to discuss as much of this as the council wants, okay? The reason I chose health benefits is because the council currently makes contributions to PERS, so there is some element of council making contributions and then getting back, I'm not saying that a pension is right or wrong, okay? I'm happy to discuss that. This particular benefit seemed to me an easy one to eliminate, we can then, I'm more than happy to have a much broader discussion, but this one was a nice one to get started with. So that's all I was really trying to do, and this is wonderful, I wanted to get this discussion started, it's clearly gotten started, that's great, I'm very happy to now broaden it out as we want. When it comes to current council contributions, I can see arguments legitimate, arguments on both sides of why you might want to increase council compensation, compensation or not. For this particular benefit, I couldn't come up with any arguments in favor of why this is a legitimate benefit. Again, it's a part-time position, people who get this position, you know, typically is for full-time, so that's why I'm, I'm just interested in getting this on the agenda.
Why do we get medical benefits if it's a part-time position? I mean, in my company, you have to work thirty-two hours to get benefits.
So let's, we could, we can talk about that, I'm happy to come back with another item nine that brings it up-
Sure, I mean, you know-
The next meeting, but I want, I'd like to get this one on the-
That's $100,000 a year, this is nothing, this is zero, Warren.
And this one, it's, I believe, again, in my view, this is an inappropriate level of benefit. When it comes to current council compensation, it's a different animal. If you want to eliminate all current council compensation, it would save the city a lot of money, but then you have to decide, are you choosing to now only choose people who are retired, who are sufficiently wealthy, that they don't have to worry about any benefits, that to serve? I know that for some people who serve, there are some level of benefits that become pretty important.
I see, so it's okay, because we're part-time, that we shouldn't get the possibility of retiree single health benefits, but it's perfectly acceptable for us to get current medical benefits, even though we're part-time? Because you're worried that only rich people will be able to serve on the council.
Let's, let's make it clear, I believe there are two, there are two different issues, there's current compensation, and there's compensation after you leave the job, those are two very different items in my viewpoint. I was addressing compensation after council members leave the job, that's where I'm starting, that's all I was planning to talk about tonight.
So what about PERS? That's compensation after council members leave the job, it's the same, and you only get it when you're retired.
I'm very, I'm very happy to discuss the substance of stuff of this at the, at the meeting, I think that would be wonderful.
Well, it just seems like if you're going to make a big deal out of something, why don't you pick something that costs the city money, rather than something that doesn't?
This will cost the city money, that's why I chose it.
In fourteen years, it hasn't cost the city money, I'm sorry, I didn't take precognition, Warren, I don't know that this will, you don't have any proof that this will.
No, you can, you can make light of this as much as you want, you can make light of me as much as you want, I don't really care.
Okay.
I think-
I do!
Good. I think this is an important issue.
Okay.
I don't.
So, so, you know, I'm the only one that qualifies right now, and I haven't taken it, well, because, I don't know why I haven't taken it, but I'm-
Still a council member, no, this is, this is only available when people leave the council.
Right, right.
And you have to serve for ten or twelve years, and it was passed in ninety-seven.
Twelve years in. So the thing is, they take, they take the healthcare money when you retire and you subtract the PERS from it, too, so there's not as, there's not that, that much money, it's, it's not like six or $700, I think it's a lot less, maybe Cora would know. Anyway, so I think it should, the whole amount of money that the council gets should be, so should be kind of like a, we should find out what everything is and what the council wants to do, and it should be up to the new council to decide. If there is a new council, that's my feeling, it's a little bit weird to have it now, but, you know, you, it's been building in a couple of people on this item, so I think it should be one more month.
Yeah, we could, if it's the council's desire, what we could do is have an item, and it wouldn't be right away, but we would, could have an item where we pull together what all of the council benefits are, and put that on for a council discussion, so that you could discuss all of them, and, and it would be clear as to what they all are, because frankly, the way it's been adopted from ninety-seven till now, and the fact that it's tied to the mid-management confidential unit, I mean, it starts to get confusing to people, especially outside of the building, in looking at that, and I think one of the things that I've heard from all of you is, you know, you'd like to have clarity, and you'd like to have transparency, you know, accountability, so people would see it, and you know what it is, and many of you have talked to me about that, so, I mean, with your indulgence, we could put something like that together in the next, I mean, I don't see a, you know, a big race to get that thing back in front of you, but that would allow the, the election to occur, new council members to be seated, and then have that discussion with the current council, which may be the same council or some other council, but that's one way to do it.
This was very helpful, I, I like this chart, you know, in nineteen ninety, in nineteen ninety-seven, they did a council benefit survey of all of what, I guess at the time, was comparable cities, and at the time, the council didn't receive any medical benefits, no dental benefits, no life insurance, no vision, no retirement, no deferred compensation, zero. It was absolutely zero, all the way across the board, and most other cities had most of those benefits. And so I would like to see the same sort of chart done now, so that we know where we stand, so that we're not just guessing about what's fair or what's not, so we know, because that's what we do with our city employees, we compare their salaries, median and otherwise, to all the other cities that are comparable, so I would like to start with that.
And I think there's some other potential changes in the government code and other things that affect salaries of council elected officials, we want to be very clear about what those things are, and put those in some kind of more complete report, so that's another approach than, instead of piecemealing it, you know, one thing at a time, I, that's an alternative that you could consider, anyway.
I've, I've for a long time been interested in this total compensation, and what I'd also like to see is, besides this compensation as far as dollars and cents, I'd like to see what other cities get, do the, do the council members get laptops, do they get cell phones, do they get, you know, car allowance, do they get any other kind of benefits? Everything, any kind of compensation, and I'd just like to compare what Belmont does, because I, you know, we have to see the whole picture, and again, I would, I, I want to make the point that, I'm sorry, but I really think that the green initiatives are more important for all, you know, as far as staff time, not just Scott's, but, you know, I know Cora probably doesn't have much to do with the green initiatives, but I really would like to see those move forward before we get deep down into this, that's, I, I think it's very important that, we had a committee of, for several years of, of many of our residents, and they have, they have, they worked really hard, and I would like to see those things come to fruition.
So where are we?
Well, you have a couple of alternatives in front of you, and it, we could do this without impacting the green initiative, we can, so if there's no hurry in getting this back to you, I'm not seeing that, so over the, I mean, does it, over the next couple of months sound reasonable, or is that?
I would certainly like to have action on this before we start getting into our next round of budgeting for the, for the year and negotiation, I mean, I, again, I think this, it sets a tone, you know, we're asking city staff for concessions on things, I think, you know, this is an opportunity for the council to develop leadership, so I'd like to do this on a schedule where we're done with this before we start moving into any kind of negotiations with staff and budgeting.
Okay.
I think that's fine, I think it needs to be done in the context of the entire benefit package, and I think it needs to be done with a comparative analysis of the other cities, that's what I want to look at, I want to look at the whole thing.
I think that's what we could do.
Okay, so we got some direction, right? Everyone?
Yeah.
Make sure, oh, oh, there's a speaker.
Yes, I have a, a slip, George Burgess.
Oh, George.
Well, the first time that I heard about this, this benefit was yesterday in reading the paper, and again, today reading the paper, I personally object to that specific benefit, because there is, I don't know of a private organization that provides that for part-time people, and I think that that should, you're getting something that perhaps is over, over the hill, if you will. Looking at the whole package, I think is beneficial, and there may be some other things in your package that I would object to also, but then there may be some things that I would say that you should have, that you don't have, but looking at the whole package, I think is a good thing. It needs to be done, you need to be providing the leadership and, and making the decision on what you get prior to negotiating with any of the other unions, as an example, so that you can show the leadership, and this is what we're doing, this is what we're giving up, or, or adding, or whatever you're doing, so that you're in a position to talk from strength in terms of what you're actually doing with your other unions.
Thank you, George. Certainly, council people can work pretty hard, I mean, I know I put a lot of hours a day, and meeting with developers, meeting with property owners, meeting, it goes on and on, maybe-
Governors.
Huh?
Governors.
Well, now, that was fun, I enjoyed that one, that was a pleasure, but I, I know how many hours I spend, and, you know, I don't know how, how I really feel about all of this, I, I really don't. If you just sit there and you don't do anything, and you just vote the way you think is right, and you don't spend any time really on council, you kind of just come to the meetings, and you don't scratch a lot of surfaces, there's, there's a difference between council people, I've been watching council people all my life, and some people don't do anything, really, and some people do a lot, I don't know where the equity is, I have no idea. There's something to be said about people getting in there and really finding out what's going on. Anyway, having said that, you know, you know what you have to do, and bring it back when it's finished.
Right, I don't think we need any more direction than that, so.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for coming, all of you, and we will see the play on Friday night.
Yay!
Yeah, I have to see it the following weekend.
Okay, and is there a motion to adjourn?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Meeting adjourned.